So three, first item on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any public comments? Okay, hearing none liaison comments. Do we have Nate?
Yes, I'm here, but no, no, no comment right now.
And do we have any other liaison present? Okay. All right, number four is the chairman's report. We just, the only thing on the chairman's report is our ongoing discussion regarding any ideas about additional volunteer recruitment retention efforts. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss on that subject?
I'm happy to keep it, keep it going a little bit if everybody's interested in doing that for, you know, part of the meeting.
Sure.
Sure, if you just say, I think.
It's just been busy with the budget and everything over the last month. So if you give me a little bit of time, I'll try to have something in January or February.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess, and I guess I just had one comment I was giving some thought today or this, this week about, you know, how we sort of look at incentivizing and coming up with the, the different benefits that, you know, help maintain our readiness and, and top shelf responses. And I was thinking that maybe it's also in order to do that, it's important to maybe, you know, get some sort of flash sort of metrics that we need that helps us choose the kinds of incentives and benefits we, we, you know, we think, you know, fit our force, you know, fit our emergency responses. And so I'm, I was thinking that maybe that's also a good place to think, Chief, when you're, you know, thinking about the kinds of incentives, just thinking maybe some of the metrics that, you know, we need to measure to say, you know, are these kind of benefits and incentives, you know, are they really measurable in terms of how we're, you know, what it's doing, whether it's, you know, the, you know, collecting the data on how many volunteers we have, you know, how local they are, you know, what, what might be their incentives if they're not local, you know, those kinds of things. And coming up with different metrics, like for instance, you know, community events, how important is that? Well, maybe the incentives for the community events we do is different than the incentives we do for, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. That's how we, that's how we also look at different things also. So not only do we, you know, to be a part of it, as part of a volunteer organization where you have to also do those types of events and.
Yeah, 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 but I, I, I think if, if we do, we may want to focus there first because that's going to be essential to coming up with the necessary incentives and benefits for us to adopt because we're going to need that kind of data to go get those incentives. I think raising the tax abatement was, you know, low hanging fruit. That's the state minimum, right? Or not minimum, but it's the state, you know, number in, in the statutes. But I think if we tailor some of our own kind of local things that we want to do as a town, we're going to need that, those, that data that says, you know, our, our volunteers have been steady, they're declining, you know, those, those kinds of rationale are going to be important to then putting the, you know, because without that, it's going to be, you know, sort of just anecdotal.
I agree.
And so if, you know, I'm happy if anybody ever wants me in a meeting or something, not to drone on, but, you know, start to think about for comment like, you know, the five key metrics that, that our force, you know, our, our fire department thinks are the ones that we need to measure, you know, to craft incentives.
No, I think it's, I think it's a good idea on how to do this. I just think, honestly, I'd like to take this up more in February, once we get through the budget process and everything and get through the holidays and everything, then I'll have a little more time to put time into it.
Okay.
We could work together on that.
Right, because obviously the metrics we get from the incident report, that's crucial, right? That's one of the big ones. But then, you know, getting sort of Nate's, you know, volunteer association report and those kinds of things, I think, could be really helpful.
Okay, I think that's a good direction that we're headed in and I think we should take it up again at the January. Okay.
Sure.
Actually, you know what? I'd like to talk about it at the February meeting, not the, the January meeting, we have to deal with the operating, the operating budget.
All right, we'll put that on the agenda next on the February meeting, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the number five, review of the current financial statements.
Okay, so.
If I bring it up?
We're still doing okay. We did, we did go after and there is a memo out to Tony Genovese. It's going to go to the Board of Selectmen at next week's Board of Selectmen meeting. To hit contingency, we had an issue with our heating system. We needed to replace an air separator down in the boiler room. Labor material, we had no heat in the building, labor material came right around $10,000. So we didn't budget for that, obviously, so we are looking to get that money replaced back into our budget because we don't have enough to even cover that. Repair.
Yeah, so what, a request, you asked for it to come out of contingency, how are you, what's happening with that?
So it goes to the Board of Selectmen and if the Board of Selectmen approve it, we had to do it anyway. I talked to Tony, we had to do it, we don't, he doesn't think there's going to be a problem getting it approved, even though we had to do it because we had no heat, it was, we had a little cold snap, we were worried about. It was really cold in the building, we needed to get heat back. And they replaced it actually on a Friday night, so we had to pay premium time. But this goes into, it's going to go, we're going to talk more about this in operating, that the building's getting older and we're having more of these repairs happening because now the building, the new firehouse isn't really new anymore. It's 15 years old, so we're starting to have failures and rot and other things happen. So we're pretty good on maintaining the easy stuff and the stuff around, but some of the mechanical stuff is starting to go. So right now, we don't have heat in the apparatus bay in the floor. We have something wrong with that, so they have to come out and they believe in it, it's an actuator, so we have to replace the actuator. We're unsure on what that costs. We have a heat, we have a heat issue and an AC problem on RTU two, which is on the second floor. So it's either really hot upstairs or actually, I shouldn't state that, it's really cold upstairs or what happens is when you have the heat on, the heat fights the air conditioning to try to overcompensate it. So the two fight each other, they try to get it to a point where it's manageable, where you could be up there and work and have a meeting or whatever. So we knew about this problem back in August. There was a part that is broken on it, they ordered the part, the part is on back order, the part still has not come in. So we're dealing with these issues. And we just learned yesterday at the fire call, we have an issue with the makeup air unit that's in the bay. It's making an awful, god awful sound, so we have to have them come out and take a look and see what's going on with the makeup area unit in the bay. So once again, all these issues are not uncommon for a building, for equipment that's 15 years old. We're just, right now, it's all coming to a head. We haven't needed to really talk about building repairs ever. But we're at this point and I think our operating budget with the building side of it is going to start reflecting it because I don't think these repairs are going to be that cheap. We, we did have a power failure here. It seemed like the micro bridge tried to kick on and the elevator, we thought we blew the elevator control board, the motherboard up. It wasn't that what happened was the elevator went into sleep mode. And to get it out of sleep mode, we had to have Kone come out and it costed us roughly right around $1,000 for him to take it out of sleep mode. So when you start adding these things up, 1,000 here, 2,000 here, and then you have a big item like a $10,000 item, we can't cover this.
Yeah, so it sounds like.
Before years ago, we were more paid for maintenance contracts, which we still are, but when hardware starts to go, we have the, we have to cover the hardware part of it also.
Right, right, so no one's going to argue with those repairs. I think that what we have to do is just start getting an idea of what should be budgeted. Obviously, it's a moving target.
Right.
Make our best effort as to what should be budgeted for building repairs going forward.
So we are in contact with our HVAC people to find out what they anticipate needs to be replaced for next year. We also have problems with two circulator pumps downstairs that feed the apparatus bay. So hopefully those are going to get us through the season, but if anybody's interested, I can take you downstairs and they're, they're really whining. So it sounds like the bearings are going in these circulators, so they either have to be rebuilt or replaced. So we're probably looking, there's two of them that feed that area there, they're probably $4,000 to $5,000 apiece. So it's not a circulator that you're buying at your house for a couple hundred dollars, having somebody come in for under 500 bucks. These are, these are more like $4,000 or $5,000 apiece, so these are pretty big items here. But we'll talk about that more with the operating budget side of it.
Okay, so anything else?
Was talking to Tony about putting some of this stuff in the capital budget, which we're going to talk about tonight. And he thought it made more sense to put this stuff in more in operating than capital unless we're talking like a $10,000 repair. But we don't know what's going to break, so to put a $10,000 repair in for, say, an air separator, which no one had any idea, is hard to judge.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds more like maintenance and repair as opposed to capital improvement. So thank you for updating us on that. Is there anything else in the year-to-date budget report you want to call to our attention?
None at this time, right now, we're, everything's okay and everything's going smooth, which is a lot better than where we were last year.
Yeah, that's true. Does anyone have any specific questions at the year-to-date budget report? Hearing none, the next item on the agenda is the Fire Chiefs report.
All right, so apparatus, apparatus is looking pretty good. We've been sending the trips out for their annual maintenance, no major items have come up really. There've been hiccups here and there, but nothing major enough to have to worry about where we are going to be on the budget. But that's always a line to keep an eye on and so far, we're doing good, knock on wood. We could talk about the capital budget right now?
Yeah.
You guys have all that in front of you?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
What do I click here?
Okay, so see that? See that?
Yes.
Yep. Click on that. All right, that's fine, click on that. In that file folder. So you're going to look at, that's a breakdown, but if you want to go to FY '25 capital.
I want something they can look at.
Want to see the pictures and all that stuff?
No.
Okay, give them that.
Share with school.
She said, and she said share screens, maybe.
Are you, can you guys see that?
No, you're not screen sharing at the moment.
Really, we, we did screen share.
We're having a little technical.
Go to Zoom. I'm here, no. Because we screen shared.
All right, as long as you've got.
She's on share screen. There you go.
All right, you guys can see that?
Yep.
All right, so what we did is this is a six-year capital plan. We started putting things in, even though they're not due, we're not looking to replace them this year. In the next six years, we're looking to replace, so like R21, that's the Suburban, 2017 Suburban. We're looking to start looking to replace that. Let's see if I can scroll over. Where you see that, right there?
No. You need the slider on the bottom to the left of where it says Nate's iPad. Yeah, and they go up.
So we're looking to do that in FY '27, so we got a couple of years before we get there. R22, we're looking to replace that car come next year. That car's got over 100,000 miles on it, that's a 2011 Suburban. The Assistant Chief drives that vehicle. It's not, we, we have over 100,000 miles plus we're showing rot in other mechanical issues with that, just like we started seeing with the fire marshal car. So what we need to do is, we need to really replace that vehicle come next year, otherwise we're going to be throwing good money after bad on a 13-year-old vehicle or whatever, so it's not really 13, 14 years old. It's not worth it anymore. An air compressor, so we put $19,000 in for that this year. So we have a compressor that we use for, it's the backup to the air brake compressor that we replaced a few years ago. But this compressor also does like air for the tire, it does air for the tires, all the air tools that we have, all the air that's required in the bay and everything else. So that's the, that air compressor, we need to replace, it's on its last leg, we're hoping to get it through until July, so that would be a Kaiser air compressor and we need to replace that.
Sean, I just.
Sure.
And some of our new, so when you see FY 2025, we are asking for approval of this capital budget by this Board of Selectmen and it's for our July to July fiscal year. And it will be July 2024 through June 30th, 2025, so it's.
No, you would pay for it, they would fund the money for FY '25 for July, but that doesn't mean you have to spend it, this is capital. So this is an operating, so this money doesn't necessarily have to get spent in the year that they budgeted for.
But we are asking for approval to, we're asking for approval to spend this money in the fiscal year ending July of 2025. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody, anybody have any questions about that?
Yeah, I do, where, where does that come from? Does that come from our fund balance at the town level?
No, that comes from the annual budget meeting. So you have the operating budgets and then you have capital budgets, so it's all part of the budget process. This is not funded any other way, but through.
So there's an additional line item, so we come up with our $45 million. I'm sorry, let me just ask a question, Chief. We, we, we have a $45 million, let's say, operating, you know, budget for our town and then we also then have our capital budget that adds on top of that, you know, so if it's 40 million for operating, then 5 million for capital, that's part of our overall mill rate or is this something that we take our capital out of our fund balance?
Nope, this just comes out of your mill rate.
Okay, out of operating, so we're, we are taking it out of operating.
You're not, so you have operating and you have capital. So we used to submit this, this year is different because we're going to, we're going to present our capital in operating at the same time where in years past, we used to go for our capital first and then we used to go for our operating second, this year, they're going to do it all in one shot.
So Scott, just to answer your question, it's part of the annual budget process where you come up after this whole process, but in May, there will be the final number that gets voted on. And include every department's operating budget and capital budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Next is radio communications upgrade. These are the portables and mobiles we got last year. So this is the second payment. If you go onto the more detail, if there's a more detailed page, you can see it. This is the second year of five of year, five years, we're paying $103,000 to replace the mobiles and the portables, which was approved last year.
You can move that down there, you can show who, right there. How it goes to.
You can see how it goes, so if I'm looking at 103, 103 and 26, 103 and 27, 103 and 28, and then FY '29 was zero. So what they did is they at least purchased all this equipment. So meaning if the town doesn't make the least, the least payment, in theory, the radios and mobiles could be repossessed.
Anybody have any questions about that? How that's budgeted and paid for? Okay, what else you got?
All right, next is the air packs, once again, this is the air pack replacement. So if we look out, we're looking for, we need to pay for it this year and next year and then we're completed because we already paid one payment, so by the time we get that FY '27, we're paid, we're at zero.
When you say we're paying it, you mean we, we haven't purchased the replacement hose yet, but we're, we're accruing, we're setting aside this money in our budget for two payments and then we'll purchase it in the following year in '26?
No, so basically, all you could do is vote on the, all we're voting for is FY '25. This is six-year capital plan, you're not voting six years down the road. You have to take each one of these payments and vote on it every single year.
Yeah, but I'm asking what, what, what we're voting on in terms of that 25, that, that $35,000.
You're, you're voting on, right now, you're voting on to make the payment for this coming year.
To an actual vendor?
Yes, to the, to the leasing company.
Okay, so this is.
We borrowed money, the, the company has already been paid for. The product's been paid for, so we're borrowing money from the bank and we're making our payment to the bank, our lease payment to the bank for.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, the radio communications upgrade is leased, correct, gotcha.
Same deal, same deal with the air packs.
So it's a finance lease?
Correct.
Maybe say approved.
Okay.
Next is Engine Nine. We put a $200,000 number in, we are going to have to, Engine Nine, we are, that's the meeting that was just before, we are going to be going out, it looks like now in January, probably take delivery in that truck probably in February. Once we take delivery, let's say we take it in February, our payment will be due most likely a year from February, meaning we'll still be in capital budget 25, which we would have to pay for that. But right now, we don't know the actual number until we, until Tony finalizes the lease on it. So, but it's going to be right around that because usually the truck was 998,000 plus leasing cost, so that number's probably pretty accurate, right around there, give or take a little bit. Next one is Engine Three. Engine Three, we took delivery in FY '20 and our payment's 175,528. And if I scroll across, you can see we have, we're, we're approving this year's payment for 175, or next year's payment and one more payment after that for 175,528. And if you look in FY '27, we're paid off.
Engine Three on the website for the volunteer, that's the old one that was retired? The picture that's up on the web, that?
Yes, yes, the old Engine Three.
That was 1989, that's still on the website, but that's been replaced and retired.
Correct, to a 2020 E1.
Okay, anybody? Go ahead.
Nope, so that's where we are on our six-year capital plan at this point. The, oh, one other thing I missed was the Aerial. So the Aerial is right now, it's more than 1.2 billion, but what I only did is I put in 300,000 for these years, the, the Aerial is probably closer to 2 million. But when you look out at our capital, right, it's going out 300 all the way to 2030. I don't know if the 300 is accurate, we got to get, it depends on how long they want to lease purchase the truck for, but it's basically a placeholder. And the reason why we put it out in FY '27 is because even if we were to, even if we were to go and spec it right now, specing that truck is probably a six-month process. Then we're going to, then we get the appropriate approvals, then what we would do is order the truck and the truck has anywhere between a two-month and three, I'm sorry, a two-year and a three-year build time. So based on that, even if we were to order it sometime this year, our payment wouldn't be due until at least '27, it might not be due until '28, depending on when the truck comes in. So right now, we just ordered that engine coming up, two years, and we don't even have delivery on it yet. So an engine, which is a lot easier to build than an Aerial, is 26 months delivery right now, where an Aerial is probably closer to three years.
So Sean, are we asking for approval to order that truck in fiscal year ending July 2025?
We are looking for, to order that truck this year, but we're not looking to fund it probably until at least '27, if not '28.
How is that approval process different if the Board of Selectmen are, or to finance, are only looking at this year's capital budget?
So basically, when we present our capital budget, we present it like that and then they basically give us the go-ahead and the Board of, Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance give us, gives us the go-ahead to start developing it and then the bids have, and then we usually use a program called HGAC, which is the Houston Galveston Contract. So everything goes out the bid that way, basically through like a state bid, like a Connecticut state bid. It's just, we use the contract down south because it works out better, it's cheaper. And then when we go to order the truck, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance both agree to it and then we order the truck, even though no money changes hands, they're just basically giving the blessing to order the truck.
Right, Board of Selectmen just, it's not part of the budget process, you will go in, you will go in and do a separate presentation to the Board of Selectmen and they will give you a separate up or down vote on whether you can order the truck.
Correct.
Anybody?
Usually on a, usually on a process like this, usually we get the board to, yeah, the board agrees to it once the spec is complete, but before we go crazy, we usually have an agreement that this is a truck that we do need, to start specing it out, once the spec is done, it goes out the bid. Then we have a meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance and they vote it up or you, or down. I mean, I don't remember them ever really voting it down, it's more, we, we more work together on our trucks because they cost enough, order $500,000.
Okay, somebody had a question?
So the, the only vehicle right now that we're looking at getting approval for is the Aerial. Because everything else is either already in our, we already have possession and we're just making our lease purchase payments. It's just, it's just the Aerial.
Except for, except for the Assistant Chief's car, R22.
Gotcha. And so why wouldn't we want to make sure, is, is unclear, because I remember in the last meeting, you mentioned that the Aerial's, you know, really going to run around a couple of million dollars and so, and it says, and so when I first looked at this, I said, oh gosh, a million too. That's, why is it, you know, and you're saying is this really is 2 million, so shouldn't we maybe want to say that even though what we're budgeting is only a certain few years out, whether we need it in parental.
It's kind of, we're kind of, you're, you're right, and this is something we've been fighting for, for years. It's, you're right in what you're saying, it's when you look at a six-year capital plan, right? So 300,000 in FY '27 probably isn't even practical, it's probably going to be in FY '28 at least. What we do is we're just putting it as a placeholder. If I were to put it $300,000 in FY '25, it really isn't financially responsible. Financially responsible, because we're asking, as a commission and as the chief, we're asking for. Five ninety-seven, we're asking for almost a million dollars out of, in capital, just for us, but. Three-hundred thousand, we don't really need, unless they wanna start. Creating what we have as a truck fund, which would make a lot of sense to a point where. If they were to put in, let's say, two-hundred thousand dollars a year, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, even if we don't have a truck payment due, or whatever. Basically, you would accumulate that money into a fund, and then when the next truck is due, you can use that funding. To pay for that truck, and then you try to have a nice level budget. Well, what happened throughout the years is the boards really didn't want, the Board of Finance really didn't want to go that route, they wanted. To more. Be in agreement when you needed the truck, because if you already had the money in place. The Board of Selectmen could actually ultimately make the decision whether you. Up or down, and it wouldn't go to the Board of Finance, because the money has already been appropriated. So basically, this way, you have to go to both boards, you have to go to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Before you even get it approved.
I just wanna be clear, what this column is reflecting is the budgeted year's capital cost. It's not the total cost of anything that's being purchased or proposed. It, it may be. But it's, that's not what that column reflects, that column reflects what we're spending and what we're proposing. To spend over six years, okay? And that's not what the Board of Selectmen is approving, by the way. The Board of Selectmen is approving the capital expense for FY twenty-twenty-five only, and the purchase of the truck. Will be a completely separate presentation, which will include. An initial presentation about what's needed, and then a subsequent final. Vote on the actual specifications and purchase price of the truck. So, all that column is reflecting is what's proposing to be within the next six years, and that's not what's.
So Scott, if you looked at the radio communication upgrade for four-hundred-and-twelve thousand, that line really was five-hundred-and-twelve thousand. Or five-hundred and fifteen thousand, because you already spent a hundred and three. So, that's what you're, that's what you gotta look at.
It's a spend, not total project cost.
And the aerial we have today was purchased used?
In two thousand and seventeen, yeah.
Or we purchased lease or.
No, we didn't, we said the association purchased that truck just off of, uh, off another department getting rid of it. It was just gonna be a Band-Aid fix for a few years, few years turned into now we're twenty-twenty-three. And even if we were to replace that truck today, we still have a three-year build time, so that truck's already what, six years old? Six years since we've had it, it was supposed to be a four-to-five-year truck, a three-to-five-year truck. Now it's a six-year truck, before you know it, even if we were to order it today, we're looking at nine years.
Did, did, I was just curious as to where we'd been, had we originally thought a new apparatus? When we went for the aerial back, you know, whatever was three or five years ago? Did we go for a new aerial and we sort of went back and got a used vehicle, or?
So we were looking, we looked at a, um. We looked at a T-Rex, and we went down to Delaware, they had one aerial tower, which was, um. At the time was the two thousand and fourteen, it was three years old. The truck was one-point-five million, and. They were looking to get rid of it, because they didn't care for the truck, it was a truck that we liked, that we wanted. And they were looking to get rid of it for nine-hundred-and-ten thousand, and. We went to the boards, and the Board of Selectmen agreed with it, the Board of Finance did not agree with it. And funding did not come through, and we lost the truck that way.
Yeah, the reason I ask, Chief, is, and, and, uh, everybody is, I'm wondering. When, if we went down that path and we had a little disagreement between the Selectmen or the Fire Department or the Fire Commission and. Yeah, and the finance people or the Selectmen, I'm wondering, does it, and I'm just throwing us out here, I'm just spitballing, and I'm not trying to make. Trouble, but I, I think about transparency, and, and does it pay? Because these are big capital purchases, and we might spend more time losing the truck and an opportunity. That, you know, does it pay to have something independent as an, you know, sort of an apparatus needs assessment? Where there's somebody that's sort of independent from our people here, that can come in and say, you know, this is what we need. This is what the options and recommendations are, so we don't get caught in that, and we have more flexibility and transparency. So the community has transparency, the Selectmen, you know, and, and, and does that independence help us? Um, with the needs assessment and a recommendation from the outside?
They need to know what we do and how, um, so we're different than, say, oranges, because. Orange has hydrants everywhere, we don't have hydrants, only twenty percent of the town has hydrants, so. Uh, we, they did a needs assessment years ago, and what ended up happening is, we ended up. Ended up with two tankers instead of one, two smaller tankers instead of one tanker, um. We did that, and everything's been working fine, I mean, no one's complaining about. The trucks that need to be replaced, we should be replacing trucks every twenty years per NPA, uh, in a rural department. We're holding trucks, uh, twenty-five years, at least twenty-five years, if not, uh, twenty-eight years. So, we're getting the life out of the truck, it's just. Um, trucks are a lot of money right now, if we bought that, uh, aerial back in twenty-seventeen. It was nine-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, that truck today sits well over two million, that's probably a two-point-four million dollar truck, which. I mean, obviously, we're not gonna spend two-point-four million dollars here, but a, an aerial truck, a tower truck, we're. We're gonna be right around two million dollars. With the way escalation is and inflation and everything else, this is where we're at right now. I mean, the same truck that we bought two years ago, that we haven't even taken delivery on yet. Um, we were just on the phone a week ago with those people, talking to them, and that same truck is one-point-four million. So it's gone up. Over four-hundred thousand dollars in the last two years.
Yeah, I think, you know.
Hydrants is going up, everything's going up, I mean. This is the new, this is the new thing, I mean, think about it, you go buy a vehicle today, you're not, you're not. Getting any really deals on a vehicle anymore either.
So I think this suggestion that we might need an independent assessment, you know, maybe we. The road. Um, I think.
You're breaking up Karen, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I don't know what's going on, I just got kicked off and got back on, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I was just saying, I think the suggestion is an important one, I don't think we're, my opinion is, we're not at a point now. Where we need to go out and get an independent assessment, and we are not even at that point now where we're asking the Board of Selectmen. To approve the actual, you know, purpose of the truck, so, um. I, you know, up to this point, I think the Fire Department has done a good. Job of educating and advocating, and the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance are certainly responsive to the needs of the town. If they, I think if it comes to, um, the point where we're getting some serious. Questioning of the need for it, that that might be something we could further consider.
And, and I wanna say, please don't ever take anything I'm saying by saying we're not, um, doing a great job. It's just more the transparency angle, uh, and. How that, how that sort of independent review may aid in that process, and it's more perception sometimes than it is. There's as much perception as it is, uh, you know, the, the actual independence. One of the things I'm assuming Finance and the Selectmen are gonna say is, obviously, we would go ahead and approve. Lots of things if they were all grant-funded, or if there was cost sharing. Has, is that something that we discuss at this point, when we sort of make a recommendation to approve a two-million-dollar recommendation for an aerial? Uh, you know, whether there's opportunities for cost sharing or, or grant, you know, funding.
What do you mean, I'm sorry, what do you mean, cost sharing?
Well, for instance, I don't know, I, you know, I'm, I'm throwing it out there, because, you know, you guys are running the, the Fire Department, but. Like, you know, Orange has theirs, right, they keep them on the post, it looks like, and it doesn't, it didn't look like Lisa, their inventory, Bethany has an aerial.
Okay, I just wanna say again, that what we're at tonight, and I think it's important to just stay focused on what we're looking at tonight. The idea that we're going to at some point have before us as a commission, the, um. Beginning the process of specking an aerial, that is not before us tonight. All we're doing tonight is voting on the money that is to be spent in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five as a commission. As basically a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, that we have looked at it, we agree it's needed. And that's it, just that expenditure, so we're looking at six years, we're just. Showing our planning process, as you said, transparency, we're showing our planning process. Um, but we are not at this point approving. The, uh, even the beginning of the process to spec in aerial, so. I think it's really important that we just stay focused on what we're actually voting on tonight.
Just wanna make sure then, I was confused, Karen, so, in other words, it's only fiscal year twenty-five, so it's not, it's not an approval of the aerial. In, in fiscal year, in subsequent fiscal years.
You guys have to, listen, you have to approve. The capital budget, the only thing we're looking to fund this year is FY twenty-five. But you're approving the six-year capital plan.
Which includes the aerial?
Right.
Yes, but you're gonna vote on this, so even if you, you're approving, but if you look at the aerial for this year, right, Scott? It's showing zero for FY twenty-five, that's the only, you can't vote on. Funding for next year until next year, you can only vote on the funding for this year, so. FY twenty-five, what Karen is saying, this is what you're voting on, but you have to, basically, you're voting on. A six-year capital plan, which changes every single year.
I understand, so that includes, I'm confused again, I'm sorry to be, but that, that includes the aerial for subsequent fiscal years.
It does. But your vote, you're gonna vote, let's say, Scott, let's say we approve the aerial. In next year, so we'd have this conversation next year. For, say, three-hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-six, you would look in, and then we would have a conversation again. Do we wanna make that recommendation again to the Board of Selectmen to move forward with the aerial for three-hundred thousand, do we want it more, do we want it less? Right now, all you're approving, money-wise, and the, the budget-wise, right now, is for FY twenty-five.
So we, it's a planning process, plans change, so just. You would have, you could vote on a five-year succession plan for. Your structure of your organization, it doesn't, it's a, we're not approving. The beginning of the process to spec an aerial, we're being presented with a plan to say, here's what we think the next six years looks like. And we're voting on that, this is not a vote on the aerial truck. That will be done in a very specific way. Over multiple.
Correct.
Okay, do we have, anybody else have any questions on the capital budget? As presented.
So all this is, all this is, Karen, is a heads up for what, what's coming in the future.
Yeah, it's basically like.
Yes.
Think the next six years looks like.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, and so I would entertain a motion to approve the senior budget as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
I didn't second it.
I did, Richard Larico.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, um, any further discussion? Right, all in favor say aye, all opposed, aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, um, the next item on the agenda is the activity report with. Popwitz.
All right, so in November, we ran a total of twenty-seven calls. We had three fires, we had two rescue emergency medical incidents, we had ten hazardous conditions where there was no fire. One call for service, uh, four good-intent calls, and seven false calls. That brings us up to three-hundred-and-forty-nine calls for the year, um, in that breakdown, um. Twelve motor vehicle accidents, and one of them was a fatal, uh, over the weekend, of the holiday. On the fires, they were mostly vehicle and, uh, power line down fires, there were not any structure fires.
Anybody have any? Okay, um, next item on the agenda, Fire Marshal's report, Fire Marshal.
He is sick tonight, so he didn't, he, um, he's not gonna, he's out here.
Okay, we'll pass that matter, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence, Karen.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the approval of the November ninth. Meeting minutes. Everyone should have gotten it in their packet, um, I would entertain a motion to approve. The November ninth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Steph, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who is that?
Lino.
Lino.
You? And, uh, do we have any further discussion on the November ninth minute? Hearing none, call the vote, uh, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for January third. Um, that will be a review of the operating budget, and that will be by Zoom. Does that work for everyone?
And that's a Wednesday, Karen. The budget's doing, uh, Monday's a holiday, is it Tuesday to come in and finalize it, presented to you on Wednesday? And I submitted on Thursday, that would be Wednesday at six o'clock.
Right, so basically, Commission. We absolutely need a quorum on January third, so can everyone just confirm? That they're able to do that?
Karen, when the, maybe Steph can answer this, Steph, when does the new. Boards and commissions take over, January first, right?
They're gonna take over January first, yes, but we also.
When do they, when do they vote on, like, re-upping everybody on the commission or changing the commission?
They'll do that sometime in December, I don't know when the next, there's gonna be a special Board of Selectmen meeting. I don't know the date of that yet, but they'll, they'll vote on them, uh, before January first. They'll, they'll make the presentation for all the new boards and commission members.
So hopefully, everybody's gonna remain on, I hope.
So I was told that my term expires in December. What do I need to do to, to try and extend it?
Have they gotten, have they gotten in touch with you yet?
They being who?
Um, Steve Lawrence, maybe, or, um. Somebody, wouldn't be the town hall, it'd probably be the parties.
Right, Sean, there's Karen.
But they'll, I can find, I can ask.
Richie, there's three of you, I think you're up, I think Karen's up, and.
Stephanie.
Stephanie's up, yeah, Stephanie, Karen, and Richie are up this year.
Yeah, I heard from Steve Lawrence, and he asked me if I was interested in staying on, so I can, I can call him and ask him about. You got, have you heard anything, Karen? So I can, I can call him and ask him about, you got, have you heard anything, Karen?
No, but, no, but we can reach out and make sure that's moving.
Yeah, yeah. And we also have to do the meeting dates for the year.
Yes, we have a proposed schedule. That's next item on the agenda.
Oh, good, okay.
Sorry, I skipped over it, but it was.
That's all right.
Yeah. Um, okay, so everyone can make January third. That's my primary concern. Obviously, we'll follow up about re- renewing or re-upping appointments. What did I say?
December third. Karen, you know what? We're gonna get you for Christmas is a Wi-Fi with with like Wi-Fi or something because your Wi-Fi sucks.
Fine.
You need to pay better internet.
We need our, we need our cell tower over here. All right, the third Monday, um, okay, so uh the meeting schedule, everyone have that in front of them?
Yes.
Did they, I mean, obviously, things come up, but um I think they have tried to move around any holidays. Uh, anybody see anything else in the twelve month schedule that looks problematic?
The only one is February, there's a holiday, so I had to move that out a week. So normally, it's a third Monday of every, a third, yeah, third Monday of every month.
I don't see anything. Jumping out is problematic. Everybody good with that?
It's hot, we're tonic on next year, December.
I got one more thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty four meeting schedule as presented.
I'll make the motion, Lino.
Thank you, Lino. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Richard Larico.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. All right, we have some new business. Yes, what is it?
Um, December sixteenth, we're doing Santa at the firehouse.
Oh, yeah.
From nine, nine to three, or nine to twelve, I'm sorry, nine to twelve. Um, and then we're going out on the fire trucks to the needy homes. Um, for with Santa on December eighteenth and December nineteenth. If you guys would like to come, it's a pretty good experience uh to see uh the joy in the kids' eyes.
Very nice, thank you.
Yeah.
Else?
That is all I got.
Okay, I would entertain a adjourn.
Before you do that, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Stephanie, you too.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Lino.
Very good, and the we are. Thank everyone.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.